Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, November 18th. We called order at 6:36 PM. We are going to pass over review of the draft IFB for the wastewater treatment fence procurement, and the review of the Public Works Office space cost estimates. Review of meeting minutes from October 21st, 2024.
Motion to approve minutes from Monday, October 21st, 2024 is written.
Second. Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Review of the multi-year agreement for the Springfield MRF. So this amendment's another five years? Any specific items that are changed or of concern or question?
No, in reading through it, I didn't have any concerns that jumped out at me.
Just give me one more minute. There was, I know there was something, I made a note on it. No, it was something else. What else did?
Okay. I believe, if I'm recalling correctly, the, um, that the revenue went up. The charges went up within the revenue table for the purchase also. For the recoverable. No?
So there are changes to the cost structure?
Yes. We have seen more favorable revenue rates on our scrap. If that's what you're referring to. And we still, for the last three years, have been paying a smaller fee, based on the net of the receivables versus the actual cost. But you're right, there's five years of escalators in this agreement for those costs.
So the calculation for the average market value didn't change? That you're aware of?
I didn't see a final discussion. For transparency purposes, there, um, the model at the MRF is reliant on all the users remaining committed in a certain tonnage coming through. We lost some contributors, they went to a single stream. The MRF wasn't processing that. But it does look like we're picking up some communities in Berkshire County, so that should help us keep our tonnage. But there had been some conversations around, does the cost model have to adjust to reflect that decrease in what the, um, the operation company was anticipating as tonnage? If we couldn't make it. It looks like they worked that out, so I don't believe they changed the cost structure as a result. Got it. Actually, I think it was the other way. They've added a processing fee on the market value of the rebate. It was the other way around. It wasn't increased, it was decreased.
Yeah.
So. I was looking back at the highlights from.
Yeah.
Do we want to review further, carry, make a motion?
I don't see any reason to carry it. I'll make a motion to approve the amendment, uh, number one to the designated community contract between Mass Department of Environmental Protection and the contractor in designated community.
I will second that.
And I, well, I gotta get the dates in there, I just gotta make sure I have them. Uh, sorry.
July 1, 2025 through June 30.
June 30, 2030?
Yep.
Okay.
If I'm reading that correctly.
Yes, you are, it's 2.2.2.
Or there too.
Yeah. Uh, effective July 1, 2025 through June 30th, 2030.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I wasn't sure if you were looking for the dates or not, or the pause, or if you would.
Yeah, I had them and then my brain stopped working for just a moment.
Got it. I will get that ready for your signature. Thank you. Um, discussion and potential appointment of Cadet position preliminary screening committee.
My story, we have been using five for hiring, right? For police?
Your last few searches for patrol have all been five, correct?
So, if I may.
Yes.
It's been a while since, um, we talked about this and the night Chief Holst was here, to discuss the, um, committee. And I know there was some talk about just carrying the committee that was in place for the patrol officer screening. I did go back, um, to the minutes when that committee was established, on September 6th of 2023. And in the notes, it specifies that, um, it was moved to establish and appoint a patrol officer screening committee. So what I would recommend with that is, uh, there was some talk about carrying over. My recommendation is that we not do that. That we would dissolve, I don't think we ever formally dissolved that committee.
Did not.
But even if it is the same people that serve on the Cadet screening committee, I would recommend we dissolve that committee and then form a new one for the purposes of this, just so that there's no confusion or technicalities that get brought up later.
Makes sense. Do they, well, we don't have that on, so I'm, I will defer dissolving to a future meeting for that one. Is there an interest at discussing or considering a five member instead of a three for the cadet? Because if there is, what we could do is we can defer it to the next meeting and, you know, Chief join us and talk through it.
Yeah, so the only question I had is typically when we were hiring for an officer's position, it was five. To go from, we, we haven't talked about that process, to go from a cadet into an officer, is there another screening committee, or is it just an appointment made by the chief? And so if that, or by us, but as a recommendation from the chief. And so if there, if there isn't an opportunity to have a full panel review that person that would be recommended by the chief to go attend the academy and to be sworn in at the conclusion, then I would suggest that maybe this should be the five. To give that full breadth of, you know, viewpoints before we move into it. If it was going to be a secondary round of interviews and panels, you could do this one as a lower, you know, threshold and then do the five member. But I don't think we need another panel in the future. I think it would just, this would be the time.
We kind of discussed about the ability to like make the decision that yes, they're moving to the academy, at which point we're down that path, should they complete it successfully.
Then, then they're appointed.
We are, so, so I feel like that's, that's the here.
Yes.
To kind of make sure we're screening well, so.
No, I, I would agree with a five-member committee, just so they are vetted.
Okay.
And.
And we're talking five plus the non-voting ex officio chief, correct? Or inclusive of? It's five plus.
That's what we decided, yeah, because it was non-voting, so we don't want to be odd.
Yep.
An even number, right, without, so.
That's what I figured.
All right, well, let's bring that back then in a next meeting and we'll, we'll talk to Chief in between and go back with a discussion around that. Carry to the second, and you want me to follow up with all past serving community members to see if they'd be interested in serving on this reconstituted screening committee? Yes, and, you know, we can work with Chief to confirm that all that work's done that they needed to do. And before you let them know that we would, if there's no further work, we dissolve that. And then are they interested in this? Got it, is the next one. All right, with that, it is 6:48, so I will call the joint meeting with the Board of Library Trustees to order. Come on up and join us, please. Please, thank you.
Mid sip of the coffee, just to.
Yeah. Hard to give any other direction that would have been appropriate. Topic tonight, review of letter of interest and potential appointment for the Board of Library Trustees vacancy. You had a chance to review?
We did. We didn't make any decision, we just talked and listened mostly.
Okay. Both letters of interest are still valid and current, is that true? It's been about a week, but had correspondence with both candidates. They're still interested at that time.
I don't know if you have a preference of who starts talking?
Please, please.
Usually had to make me stop.
We'll get you started, we'll go from there.
It appeared to me that one of the letters had, and one of the candidates had some more depth of interest than the other one. And the person that I thought had that depth of interest informed us that they'd be pleased enough if we appointed the other one because they do a good job. Didn't, I mean, didn't say they didn't want it, but they're just being very pleasant about it.
Okay.
And, um, I don't know, if you had a thought on who you might be interested in, but. They're both good candidates.
Yeah, I mean, I think they were both good candidates. I, I think my initial thought after meeting and talking with them was that Devon might be a better fit at this point. Just because he's the one that stayed with, that the interest really seemed there completely. And it sounded like from the other person that yes, he was, that she also thought he would be a good person if, and I, so I think that he would be a good fit.
And, and I, I thought the other way, I have nothing against either one of them. You know, um, he has a person in school and he's been active at there. I just thought, and they both come to the library, both candidates and their families, so. I thought her application was more in-depth and I thought she would, would be a better candidate. But either one could do the job. I don't know if you've talked to anybody, you have any preference?
I didn't talk to either one of them specifically about that, but, um, in reading them, their letters of interest, they both sounded like they could do the, you know, be able to do the work and had interest in it. Just from on paper, I kind of, there was more depth in, obviously in one over the other, but in what was written, but that was, that was all I had, so. You gentlemen had anything either way?
No, I, I was just going to say, based on, uh, so I didn't have an opportunity to meet them. I, I met Devon just from being active in other meetings and, you know, throughout the school and other things like that. But reading the two of them, I think, Dan, I picked up on what you picked up on. It's particularly in the realms of health and well-being. And then the next paragraph of that letter of interest, um, talking about individuals from different backgrounds and the outreach and accessibility. And, and so there was just a little bit of depth in that that I really enjoyed. And I thought that was somebody who could, you know, because the day-to-day operations are the operations and, you know, we have a wonderful staff that can take care of that. But how to pull out those little pieces, I thought that was touching on it. But hearing what you said, it sort of flips that just a little bit. And I'm like, if somebody's interest is sort of waning, even though they might have the, the skillset or the drive, you know, there, do they have the ability to put it all in there as opposed to somebody else? So I, I don't know, I'm torn because I wasn't able to meet with them and, you know, listen to them talk about it.
And I've heard him talk in other, like you said, in other areas. And he's very well-spoken in public, he's not afraid to speak. So he's not afraid to stand up. I don't know anything about her as far as whether she's able to do that or what her background is in that respect.
Yep.
Similar to what Kelly said is, I, I don't know, um, Ms. Bailey, and what I know of Devon, interactions in public and at meetings and, you know, there are some times when I've agreed with things he said and there are times that I've disagreed. But I appreciate his ability to formulate arguments that are compelling and based on facts and not emotions. And, you know, at times, one thing I appreciate is when somebody can really cause me to challenge my own beliefs with arguments they make. And on occasion, he's done that now. Without having anything to compare with the other candidate, I can't speak to it. So I feel unqualified to make a full opinion or recommendation myself right now.
It's difficult when you have two good candidates.
We are not usually faced with this. This is a good problem to have.
It really is.
Good, good problem to have.
It is, it is.
I, I just want something I picked up on, I don't know who said it, but I didn't, I didn't see her interest as waning. I just, uh, just as, as an aside, as she left, she knew who the other candidate was and she, I think she saw him there. Says, oh yeah, he's a good guy. You know? I just, I just thought her, her, her application letter was much more in-depth than, than his. And his was, oh, I've got a little time, I can do it. She's, hers seemed to indicate more of an interest to me. But, um, I can go either way, but I, if it were me, I'd, we almost, we appoint her.
Is that a motion to the sound like one? Some point, we'll get to that.
We have to do something sometime.
Yeah. Right, right. Well, and it's easy said here, but they're not here to, obviously to say it to. There's plenty of opportunities in town, so if they, whoever doesn't, you know, get an accept is interested. We have lots of things, we'd love to have them take part in, so. There's that too.
Don't get too far afield, we really need another alternate on the zoning board of appeals. If I have to recuse myself from something, we've got nobody there. Be a good spot.
There's a list unfortunately of, of those situations we have. Well, I welcome a motion if someone wants to make one, this is a tough one for sure.
I'd, I'd move we appoint Maggles on Bailey, but if, if, if you rather field, if you both know it, don't want to do it, I won't be disappointed and get into a snitch about it.
I don't think there's a poor choice here.
No, there isn't, that's.
That's why it's challenging, right? We have more options and there's no, there's no, they're both good choices, so. Is there a second?
I was with you, Dan, before our conversation tonight. When, reading it just on paper, I was with you and for the same exact reasons, but I'm not going to second that one. Okay. Well, will you entertain a different motion?
I know, I didn't carry, so.
And, and I say that.
I wasn't seconded, so.
Yeah, with all, with all respect to both candidates, just hearing, uh, there was one piece that both of you had said is the proven track record of being able to speak in a public setting, have an opinion, let that opinion be voiced, and do it professionally, diplomatically. That swayed me away from just the written application. So I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Devon Goddette to the, uh, as a member of the Board of Library Trustees through June 30th, 2025.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent. We'll let them know and.
It does say it right on there.
Oh, yeah? Thank you for that.
It's a good thing you put it right in black and white.
We got so distracted with the deliberation there.
Yeah, I forgot. It only says it in legal display.
All those in favor, roll call vote, Brian, we call the roll, please. Slickman Loane?
Aye.
Chairman Smith?
Aye.
Slickman Basteros?
Aye.
Trustee Loane?
Aye.
Trustee Chairman Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. I'm curious. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll make a motion to adjourn the joint meeting with the Board of Library Trustees and continue the Select Board meeting at 6:59 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good night. Review of the Financial Services Clerk Position Screening Committee Recommendation. So to recap, there were six applicants which were reviewed. Five were contacted for interviews, two declined.
Correct.
Three individuals were interviewed and therefore those same three are the finalists that have been brought forth?
Correct.
Oops, what just happened?
So.
Questions, comments, yeah, go ahead.
Having just seen this, as of 6:30 this evening, and not having a singular recommendation, but multiple applicants.
I mean, I think, did they provide, did the committee provide an opinion? I know they, or a recommendation, I know we didn't put it in there ready because they had, you know, candidates to offer more than one, but I do think they did come to a.
The committee did follow your typical process and they had the interview assessments as well as the review of the applications. Based on those tools that they used to analyze, if they were asked to provide a recommendation, their initial recommendation would be for an appointment of Emily Pollard.
It's a unique evening, we have options, we have more than, you know, one, one succeeding, you know, candidate that has made it through screening, so. It is a good place to be, but not somewhere we've spent a lot of time lately, unfortunately, so.
So personally, I don't feel I have enough time with the material, the people. Whether or not that's another interview or just reviewing all of the documentation and the applications and everything to be able to give it the time it needs to, before we offer a position to somebody.
Right, or, or hold further interviews.
Or hold further interviews, I would like to just table it this evening, just because it's, it's not just a rubber stamp motion. There's substance there that I want to make sure we have time to review. We have a meeting on the second again?
We do. Without, without go, you know, going outside the lines, if you will, is it reasonable to let you know if any of us want to hold interviews or not? Or are just ready to discuss again prior to that meeting?
That would be helpful.
Because then I think, you know, maybe set a deadline by, you know, later this week or something.
I was gonna say even, our next one is on, yeah, Thursday.
To let Brian know if we, you know, any of one of us would like to schedule interviews or if we're satisfied with the content to have a discussion. That we don't believe we do, just like one direction or the other, because then if any one of us says we'd like to, then you could proceed with trying to get that scheduled.
Okay.
Whether that was a different night than the second, but at least we can get, start getting that on the calendar rather than waiting two weeks to do that potentially. Does that work for both of you?
So you want Thursday, end of the day Thursday?
We can let Brian know by end of the day Thursday if you'd like, you know, your preferences to start scheduling interviews or not. And that gives you what you need to.
That's all I need.
For the second or.
That's perfect.
Otherwise, okay.
And I can reach out to the candidates.
Okay, I just don't want to leave it that long if we end up doing that and just continuing to prolong it.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay. That'll give us an opportunity to go through it a little closer and, and understand where that leaves us with questions here that we want to go through with the, with the candidates or. Where we already talked about.
And the other three of you have any further questions about the materials, just let me know and we'll get you what you need.
Okay.
So we will carry that to December 2nd?
Got it.
Unless we schedule something otherwise in between.
Perfect.
Separately for it, based on that feedback. Any questions so far, I know we just got it, so probably not?
No.
Nothing at this time, no.
Okay, great. Then we'll do that. Discussion and potential appointment of wastewater maintenance position preliminary screening committee.
So you have applicants for your position, we had a preferred deadline of today. I don't know if more came in this afternoon after I was out of the office, but you already had at least two, if not more applicants in, so.
Okay. Just trying to recall what we did last time. For a committee for this position.
I think it was 2021 that we last searched this position?
Yeah, 21.
I don't recall if I was on that one or if it was just for the highway, I can't remember, it's been a few years.
It has, I've been on so many now. I hate to say that, but I've been on so many and I've been on a few wastewater ones for sure already.
Yeah, I can't remember.
And a few highway ones.
I don't think I was.
Why I can't find that quickly, I'm surprised.
It was in July of 2021, we had a process memo at the end in August of 21, but neither tell me the size of the committee.
Size or makeup?
When was it, July 21, you said?
July 21.
Oh, it was annual time, meeting time, I'm sure we weren't busy or anything. Let's see. A second longer here, see if I come across it.
We had a lot of meetings that July.
Yeah, but they probably started a month or two before to get through it all.
Right.
For being, meeting weekly and being, I think, complete remote still, wow.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot on there.
I may have just found it. We do have three member.
Okay. Similar construction.
It was the same recommendation.
It was. All righty then.
July 9th of 21.
That answers the question that I had, so.
Who's the member we're designating, that's where I was going with it.
I know where you were going. And if I'm not mistaken, we've got three. Three hiring committees coming up.
Yes.
We just deferred Cadet, at least in a couple of weeks, this one, and Town Planner's next. So we've got a few. So with just thinking with that in mind, that we're doing that up in whatever way, I don't know if anyone has any significant preference or any specific one, not to jump ahead into the, the town planning.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll jump ahead and I've been working with Brian for the town planning stuff for, you know, since Mariah was still here. So I was gonna throw my name in for that one, so I prefer not to do two out of three.
It only makes too much sense to argue, so. I am fine with that.
I'll flip a coin with you either way, I mean, I could do either one, I've done, I've done both, so, whatever you, if you have a preference.
I felt a small degree of guilt when you both said you've done so many of the highway and the water. But okay, well, that's a clue, it might be my turn, but.
No, not at all.
I mean, I, I know, I'm just.
No.
Again, I could, I'm willing to continue with the Cadet Committee if and when that comes appropriate or I am more than happy to serve on this as well.
I have no problem deferring to your experience on the law enforcement side and being part of that screening. Especially just knowing how maybe, you know, early, if you will, in someone's career that we are screening them to where they could potentially end up, I gladly lend that to you and your expertise, so. I have no problem with that and I've done these a couple of times, so I've got a little experience here, a little understanding, so. Works for me, I guess that means I just volunteered.
You did.
I heard. My, my way around, I just volunteered on this.
Are we introducing common sense into the world of politics?
Yes, we are. Wait a minute, okay, you take.
Do you need a motion on this to create it?
You got planning and I'll take law enforcement.
Yeah, just gonna mix it all up.
Because that, that would sound much more political. Yeah, a motion on a makeup and appointment if we're doing both, right?
Correct.
Before we get two motions, are we starting with water or are we?
We're doing the wastewater one, maintenance labor first, yeah, and then I'll call the other one and then we'll talk about that officially.
In that case, I'll hold my question.
Okay, are we good with the three member on this one?
Yes.
Okay. Looks like you were ready to make a motion.
Yeah, I was just gonna do it all as one motion, if you're fine with that.
Fine with me.
Make a motion to establish a three-member committee for the maintenance labor position preliminary screening committee comprised of, are you doing that one, Jake? Jacob Smith as the select board member, Peter Sanders, wastewater and water superintendent, and Darby Shagden, assistant chief operator.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Discussion and potential appointment of the Town Planner Preliminary Screening Committee.
So I'll introduce my question at this time. Recommendation is for a five-member committee and I am, I see four members so far. Is there a, another department head or somebody within the town that would make sense to add to this committee or suggestion, recommendation?
Well, that's part of the discussion.
That's part of the discussion, yes, great observation. So this has actually been not only challenging to get applicants for, but also challenging to get individuals to serve on the committee. So these individuals have come forward, interested in serving. For department heads, five is usually the smallest we've ever done a search committee or larger. Community members make sense. In this case, we are asking Jackie from the planning board to represent. It may be appropriate for another land use board, if there was a representative from one of those to also attend that would be working alongside the town planning office. Or another community member designation could be appropriate. It's not that we couldn't ask more department heads, but.
So am I, and again, we can look it up if, if we, if we want to, I believe there were seven the first time.
There we go.
You don't need to look it up, you don't need to look it up. But I was thinking, we don't have anyone.
This was not a department head position initially.
I understand that.
So I think it was five and I think we eventually, it was reclassified.
Yeah.
Okay, I know, you're right it wasn't, you're right it wasn't. I remember lots of discussions because I was on it.
Yes.
That time. It was very interesting discussions and a very interesting process because we had a wide variety of candidates.
Right.
When we hired Mariah, so. Either way, I just noticed, the one thing I had to think is we didn't have any financial side of this and maybe not, it could be employee, you know, side, but also I was thinking, you know, capital and FinCom. A lot of our projects are all driven around financial impacts and, you know, and planning on that side of it. So I did wonder if, although I'm all for community members, many of those committee members, you know, planning board and, I'm sorry, capital planning and the FinCom are, you know, community members. So maybe that's a, an area to ask if any of them would be interested in serving.
Would you be interested in doing a seven member or still keeping it as a five?
I, I guess it depends on how far you guys want to go with putting it out. Like if you want to put out, you know, asking for interest from the public for a week or two or, you know, week and a half or something here leading up to our next meeting. And then I would recommend we also ask those groups.
Well, that's, that's why I was thinking that is.
With six or seven, you know, say we came out with seven people who are interested total with, who are here, then, then maybe.
Yeah.
I'm not leaning to seven as a, we have to have seven. But I think if we put it out broadly, would just be prepared for either we're culling or we're, you know, kind of, we're not taking everybody who's interested or maybe we're expanding it.
Right, it may end up still as a five, but I would like, you know, I, to your point of the financial piece, but I also don't want to lose out on the community piece and while, yes, they may overlap, it's hard to be in that seat and, and, and wear two hats simultaneously. And I would, you know, I'd love to open it up for both. So if we could ask somebody that is integrated into the financial piece of the town, whether that's through capital or through FinCom or whatever that might be, or even somebody in our financial offices that work for the town, one way or the other. But then also just a general community member that's a resident that says, I'm interested in, you know, the, the direction that the planning department would be going and I want to serve on that, you know, hiring committee. I'd love to be able to take both of those if we can and have them be two different people.
Absolutely.
Not the same person with two hats. But I don't know what the interest is going to be, so we may open it up, put it out there and then come back with a five member, you know, next time anyways.
And we could establish it, if we wanted, as five, we could appoint four now if we wanted to.
I was gonna suggest that actually.
Next meeting, but I don't know what work may get done between then and now, if any, so I don't know if it really matters. We could just establish it next time, so I don't know if there's any benefit to doing it tonight.
Okay.
But I like what you're saying and where you're going as well. I would think maybe put out to our whole financial team, both groups and our direct, you know, staff.
Okay.
And to say we're looking for, you know, members to one or more. And I mean, if we ended up with a staff member and a committee member or two committee members and a resident or two residents and one committee.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it could be a combination of any of those.
Then let's do seven, right?
Got it.
So we'll put that out, put it out to the public as well, that we're looking for one or more.
Yeah.
And we can determine what the, and more is when we see the interest.
You got it.
I think that's.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't go any bigger than seven.
We're establishing a five.
Let's not go any bigger than seven.
Yeah, to that point.
Then you lose, yeah, functionality.
Yeah.
I, I think seven's a good number and in recent years, there has been more commentary coming from our constituents that, you know, on the direction and the number of projects, the scope of projects.
Yeah, well, that's what I was leaning towards, I'd love to hear from communities.
Our taxpayers should at least be afforded the option.
Yeah.
To step up and participate and share their thoughts.
I'd love to fill a couple of seats with them, if there are interested people who are not already serving, for sure.
I mean, in theory, I would like to see one financial and two community.
If we could.
If you're listening out there and you're a resident in town, we want your voice.
I agree with you, I agree with you. But yeah, and if you want to quantify, we're gonna do a five to seven, just so people don't think it's open-ended, because it isn't. I agree, I think seven's the catch. We're establishing a five to seven member.
Okay.
Committee to do this.
Carrying this to.
Looking for interest.
December 2nd.
Please.
You got it, thank you.
Anything else on this one?
Nope.
Good questions. And I didn't hear applicant-wise, I know you said you were working on some, we have a few.
Yes.
Okay, is it closed or is it rolling?
We listed as rolling.
Okay, good.
There was a preference deadline, so.
Yeah, not perfect, just especially since we have a little, we're, we're waiting a little longer, gives us more opportunities.
Correct.
Okay. Review of request to allow a voluntary transfer of accrued sick time and benefit.
Just, just.
I already started.
Yeah, I wanna get the conversation started, so I, I went through this, and I read through this several times, it's a very, very short, two paragraph memo, but there's a lot in there, and depending on what lens I'm looking at it from, if I'm looking at it just strictly taking out any liability, and it's just one employee helping out another, I am absolutely in favor, you know, of doing that and allowing that to happen, take that hat off and just put on the, the financial, there's a financial piece of sick time, while it's there for the use of each and every employee to use, it's also, as you start pooling that and giving it to one or more, the likelihood of everybody using all of their time is slim to none, so there's, you know, it's, it's more costly when you're funneling it all into one use and allowing one person to use more.
Than a buyout or a.
And I, and that's just looking at the totality of the whole thing, I don't think that cost analysis plays enough of a part for me to make that be an impact in my decision, but I wanna at least, you know, throw it out there, it's, it's a piece of it, a sliver of that pie. So, I'm not opposed to allowing it, but I am concerned about the process, the, the process, the limitations, those questions that you posed in there, and I have not been able to, I was trying to go back to our time discussing this when we were actually creating.
Two years ago.
Yeah, it's been a couple of years since we were creating the bylaws and the personnel manual and all of that language, and trying to figure out how to embed something like this in there so that it can, can hold water, and it can actually be processed out and, and completed in a way that makes sense, and it's not just arbitrary that we're like, yeah, sure, go ahead and transfer the stuff, and then the next person's like, well, I wanna transfer all of my vacation time, or I wanna transfer, and, and all of a sudden, it's opening up Pandora's box, and, you know, so I just wanna make sure that we do our due diligence in ensuring that we put some protection for the town, but, protection in the sense that we have a procedure that we're doing, and then we follow that.
Agreed.
And it sets a pattern or precedent for the future when people wanna make these same requests, or even if they don't have to, if we set up a practice that allows it to happen, but only under certain circumstances or in certain ways, so that it's not just Without getting into too much detail, Brian, do you know if this is, if this request is...
Time-sensitive?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's what I was.
So, I.
That's what I, that's what.
I was letting you finish, cause I was gonna add that piece of.
Yeah, and so that was my next one, is we can't deliberate on it forever, if we're in favor of doing it, I would sort of.
Do we, do we, do we in the interim, while we build a full set of guardrails and like, process?
Allow it?
Potentially, you know, put a, a temporary kind of.
That was.
For the moment, until we've developed, not, you know, without precedent, right? That, that whatever we may implement may be different than kind of.
Without a lot of.
Yep.
Guardrails to it. So, what I was gonna suggest is that very thing, is that we, like I said from the very beginning, I'm in favor of allowing it, cause it is, you know, it's looking out, it's one employee looking out for their fellow coworker and, and making sure that they're taken care of, and I'm all for that.
And the team and.
Yeah, and so, I, I'm in favor of allowing it to happen, and moving forward, I don't know what sort of motion we would need, or what parameters we would wanna put on it, if it's an unlimited amount of time, is it up to whatever they have, you know, we, are we setting those type of parameters for this one time, or do we want more time to deliberate that, and this one can be a little bit looser while we take our time to set parameters later? I'm leaning more towards, I would probably be, I'd be more inclined to be looser on this one and allow more transfer, if both parties are willing to do it, and then we can have a longer discussion about how we do that going forward, and what mechanisms, and who's allowed to, who's not, is there differences between exempt and not, like, just all the different parameters, you know, if it's in, within a bargaining unit, outside of a bargaining unit, like, what sort of things are we talking about, we have to discuss all of those.
So, I'm in, I'm leaning towards a flexible tolerance for now with a specific end date. I know we're coming up on budget season, we're coming up on other things, could we say something like, we would allow this to, you know, occur through the end of this fiscal year, to June 30, 2025, and then make a, a note in the, you know, post-town meeting, and we can reconvene on this topic and be more formal at that time. I mean, if there's an, oh, I don't know that there'll be a lot of open segments of time within our meetings through budget season.
Yeah.
That's a fair, fair point.
Refresh my memory, Brian, I apologize, I cannot recall, are we accruing sick time one lump sum, or is it monthly?
Monthly.
That's what I thought, okay, so this would be to augment whatever this current employee would be getting monthly?
Yes.
Okay. Calendar year doesn't matter, it's more about fiscal year?
There is a cap on the, there is a maximum cap, but it's not necessarily limited to the calendar year.
Right.
It's once you hit the cap.
It's once you hit the cap, it's kind of rolling, right? You just stop accruing when you're at the cap?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanna make sure that December 31 isn't gonna trigger anything related to sick time, I didn't think it would, so I'm, I'm with you on that one, Jim, I, I would, I'm not sure how to craft that language, but I'm sort of leaving it open-ended, but I would also, at the end date of June 30th, 2025, any transfer of sick time must be used by, so if, you know, so you're only transferring what can be used by June 30th, 2025, so I don't want, I, I don't want it to be open where on June 29th, 2025, we transfer another, you know, 140 hours, so it's, it's working, it's, it's allowing enough transfer to establish some ease of use of sick time between now and June 30th, 2025, should it need to be accessed.
True.
Does that make sense? I don't know the circumstances.
Now I'm gonna get in the weeds, no, no, that's totally fine, now I'm gonna get in the weeds of, of why this is complicated, that you kind of referenced when you say that, cause I'm listening to that going, so does that mean they have to use their accrued and can't get a gifted benefit above that, or can they use the gifted benefit up and keep accruing their own? Because the whole idea of like, it has to be used by, and they're also accruing, so, it just gets complicated, and I only, I only bring that up as a, you know, as examples of it's, this is why the devil's in the details here with this, right?
And again, we're not gonna get all those cleaned up for this one.
And I don't want to, so that, so my only concern may be about trying to even put that around it, or how we put that around it, is it, it could get really nuanced, right? I almost feel like it's, it's difficult to say we have any or all, like, you know, either have really no kind of really limitations around it yet, or we have.
Okay.
Clean ones?
If it's.
I don't, I don't know that that's the right answer either, but.
If it's easier to sort of wrap our head around it for this one circumstance, while we answer all of those other questions, then it would just be a motion to allow it, the transfer from one employee to another between now and June 30th of 2025.
And who's authorized to do that? Well, and then the questions that you.
Great question.
Who, who, yeah, who approves it? I also think, again, this is as we build it out, you know, we gotta be thoughtful about the impacts to a department, and like, you know, how do we operate, and all those nuances of all of this.
Because all, this is all in, in a vacuum.
Exactly.
We have no, there's no, I have no knowledge of what department, staffing levels.
Fair.
You know, what the impact is for long-term, you know, are we backfilling, it's just, I don't have any of that information, it's just a surface level of one employee saying, I wanna give some sick time to help out another employee, and us saying, sure, on the surface, that sounds great, let's have one employee help another, without any other context.
I'm sorry.
And, and I know you can't give the context, which puts us in a.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, and I don't want it.
We're not asking for it either, we're not, we're just trying to be.
I just want people to understand that it's not, it's not for lack of empathy that we wanna be able to help, cause clearly, we're all saying, yes, let's allow this, but there's many layers to making sure that we do it the right way.
Agreed.
That, I'm also just stalling, cause I'm trying to figure out how we, how do we authorize that, and who's approving it?
Would it make sense to have the donating employees' department head authorize the transfer, where they would have more immediate knowledge of what sick time that person has? Or would this be?
I was gonna say on the other side.
I was gonna say the receiver, which would.
The receiving side, because of the, that understands the situation and the impact.
Of, yeah, of the length of absence and, and all of that, that's where my mind was going, you know, Brian, I, I was gonna throw it out there as, on your plate, but, as H, the HR, but I'm also thinking, this is more of a financial piece, and our treasurer also
You know, June 30, or sooner, if we adopt a policy prior, like, when the policy goes into effect, the policy goes into effect, and not have this supersede that.
Okay.
So, if we, if we get there sooner, that we can implement whatever, you know, practical application we could figure out to do this, within all the confines that make sense. We always have the option to extend it the other way if we don't get there, right, so, so why not, why not give us that flexibility to shorten it, should we develop a program by, before then? But I don't know, it's a little arbitrary to come up with a, a cap, and hours, that was just another idea of like, I don't know, would, what makes sense, right? It's hard to, it's hard just to define that in aggregate, and we can't define it specific, cause that doesn't work now or in the future as a policy tailored to a situation, or. I want to just apply that, like, common sense rule to it, but it's not easy to kind of say, you know, within, within reason, what's that mean, right? It's very undefined right now, so.
That subjectivity would be a Pandora's box.
Yes, and I don't wanna put that on anyone, anyone, one of us, or anyone else to have to work within that.
Is there any specific thing, when you were talking about limiting for June 30, that you were thinking of trying to prevent?
No, it's just cleaning it up with the fiscal year, because inherently, you're tying the financial component of payment of sick time to a, to a fiscal year, that's all.
For paid-out hours, but for accrued, where, you know, we don't necessarily budget the full liability, you know, that way, if we did, then I'd be more inclined to think it's a big deal.
My, my only other thought was if you were just trying to like, limit how far out it went, we could, that's where my month kind of comment came from, was like, you could say, okay, no more than, whatever, 180 hours.
Yeah, what's the max accrual that we have right now? There's, there is a cap on it. I, you know, you would think I would have all memorized.
Memorized?
380 pages of that manual memorized, but I do not, so, I apologize.
Oh my goodness, if you did, you might wanna.
But I know that Brian can search in a matter of seconds and pull it up and have it at his fingertips.
For what it's worth, all the links.
I mean, it goes without saying, but I just wanna mention that, the reason I'm asking is we have to make sure that any transfer that happens isn't more than, doesn't put them at a higher limit than what they're allowed to carry at any one given time anyways.
So, that's good language, they, they can, someone can't be gifted to exceed the cap.
And so, the reason I say that is, we're approving this as a one, as a transfer, are we allowing, should a second employee say, well, I also wanna help this employee out, and they both are at their cap, and they say, I'm willing to give them two-thirds of my sick time, well, now that's.
Four-thirds of the cap?
That's four-thirds of what the cap is, so now they're over, so now they've got more than what we would allow any one person to carry, so it's just, I'm trying to sort of flesh that out and figure out if there's a way I can, you know, whether it's through accrual or transfer, they cannot carry a balance higher than what's allowed by policy.
The maximum is 150 days, and we define days as eight hours.
Eight and four, 1,200 hours?
So, as we're doing math and fleshing it out, there's some rough language.
Thank you.
So, not to exceed 40 hours per donating employee per fiscal year, and the receiving employee does not exceed the maximum accrual time of.
It's 1,200 hours.
If I'm hearing that, so they can't, a don, a donor can only donate up to 40 hours per fiscal year, is that what I heard?
Uh, right, or I, I don't know if I was.
I don't know if that's a number, but that's.
Forty hours per fiscal year, or 40 hours per month?
Got it.
Or, I don't think I finished my thought when I moved on to the.
That's okay.
Or, you mentioned the accrual point, and I jumped, yeah, squirrel.
But, but the principle, I just wanna make sure I was following the principle of what you were saying, there was a limit per fiscal year that someone could donate.
Yes, and I think those are discussions that we could have, when we're figuring out all of the logistics of it, I'd be more inclined to just focus on the, from my own personal standpoint, is to make sure that we're not exceeding the 1,200 hours, that they're not receiving more than what they could carry anyways.
Right.
There's validity in limiting how much any one person can do, and how that happens, but I think it's on us to work very quickly over the next few months to sort of have this solidified, so that should this request happen again in the future, we have a policy around how to do it.
Right, and I mean, cause we're fortunate that we have a lot of empathetic people that work for this town, and if you were struck in with an illness, I might be, take all of my time, yeah, and then tomorrow, I get hit by a bus.
Yes.
I'm not saying who's driving, I'm just.
So, I mean, these are the, those are the things that come into play, of whether or not somebody's giving away more than they should, and now they need it, and now we're in this weird dilemma of, how do we get that person whole again, do they have to go, take it back from the person they gave it to, and, yeah, all of those. And, yeah, all of those things, the legal thing of, you're the person receiving the, and I donate 1,000 hours to you, and then you give your two-week notice, and you've got 1,000 hours on the books, and I've got to pay you for those. These are all the things that come into play.
Right.
I'm not worried about...
Which is the least expensive option, by the way.
It is, yeah.
From a fiscal standpoint.
I'm not worried about those to approve this to happen. I'm thinking just keeping it very high level for this one.
So strike what people can donate.
The receiver can't get more than what they're allowed to carry by, per policy.
Okay. And what is the minimum that someone gets annually, per the policy? It's a grant.
Full-time?
Yes.
96 hours.
That's the minimum accrual annually?
Right.
My thought process was actually that not allowing someone to donate below 40. Like, I hate to do that, but if someone has 40, then you can't donate. So you have to retain some.
I see what you're saying. The way you first said it, I was like, they have to give more than 40, and I was like, that doesn't make any sense. Somebody should give eight hours if they want.
The idea that the donor must not empty, they can't empty their bank. They got to maintain at least something.
They have to maintain something, in case something happens.
And I was thinking, maybe the annual, maybe it doesn't need to be that much, but the idea that... The whole idea is, no one knows what's going to happen. I don't want to see people go to zero, even in goodwill and, you know, good intent, to then potentially be in the predicament themselves, reading.
I would say either 40 hours or 80 hours, one or two weeks. Because, you know, to your point, you donate all your time, and then you sprain your ankle, and you're out for a week.
I like that better. I don't think the person that hit the bus needed the time, but...
Right, yeah, sprained ankle, you need some time. You get hit by a bus, your time's irrelevant.
Potentially.
Yeah, so I agree that we should have a holdback. This is a very long motion. It's only because there's so many questions unanswered. If we had a policy, it would just be like, yeah, it's approved by policy, and you move on. It's lack of policy that makes this very convoluted. You got, you got some language you're gonna try and...
Any other concerns, or we're good with that?
So they can't go below a certain number of hours. I don't care if it's 40 or 80, but it's something to allow that person that's donating a holdback, in case they get sick. They can't donate, the receiver can't receive more hours above what's allowed by policy, which is 1,200 hours. And that's inclusive of things that they're already accruing. They can't accrue or receive in donation and have at any one time more than 1,200 hours. And that's something, logistically, that the clerk, the accountant can figure out, and like...
So just make it, I was gonna say, just make it just shy. I mean, we're talking 1,200 hours. Say not more than 1,000. Like, they can't, their, a donation cannot bring them over 1,000 hours.
Sure, and that allows for them to accrue stuff.
You got more than enough to accrue for a year. I mean, you could say less, but it's just simple.
Okay.
That's a lot of hours.
That's a lot of hours. It's a lot of weeks.
It's a lot of weeks. And you can donate, there's nothing such as you can't donate again, if needed, for some reason.
Fair enough.
Not yet.
So they can't, they can't donate more than 1,000. They can't leave themselves short with...
Less than...
Less than 80.
80? So is that, because you get the HR hat sometimes, is there anything that you are thinking about that is imminent that we aren't addressing, rather than the broader, there's lots of things?
Yeah, there's a whole list of things.
There's a lot. I think you worked through some of the guardrail. That's the term you want to use. Pieces that need to be contemplated, and whether you stick with these or that you amend them when you create the policy. I think it's fine. I think for this implementation of, I don't know what to call this.
Allowance?
Allowance, yeah.
Yeah, temporarily or short-term, yeah.
And I'm sure we will, we will realize things as we try this, that will inform whatever that future practice is, so...
Yeah.
If I'm following a weak side, cannot exceed 1,000 hours for the recipient accumulated. Total, with the donation and current balance. Cannot donate below 80 of your own. The donor can't go below...
Yeah, yep, okay.
And then we said that the, like, there's still the approver piece. We kind of talked about a recommendation, or who, what, where, but... So how does someone go about offering it? Do they go to the employee's department head, the recipient's department head, or to Brian? The HR? And note that they want to?
The donor, I think, can be directly to Brian, and, yeah, I would say through you.
That's similar to how we handle FMLA.
Yeah.
So all the paperwork comes through me, and then I follow up with the employee, answer with the supervisor, work out what needs to be handled, and then work with the treasurer's office to implement.
Yeah, and that's, that's on the receiver's side too, of knowing that, you know, working with that. Because there's no impact to the donor's department head. They're just giving away some sick time.
Right.
It's the receiver who's going to be out for more time, because, you know, they're out unpaid sick time. That's the one where that department head gets involved, knowing about the extended leave.
And then it helps minimize how much we're sharing information.
Right, and that doesn't have to be, not all that has to be in the motion necessarily. We just need to document how that'll work, so...
Process.
Right.
Memo to departments.
So process is, anyone interested in donating time would speak with Brian?
Yep.
Brian will coordinate with the department head and the recipient to discuss that offer, and... Are we saying it's a given, or do they need to okay it? Is it up to the recipient to accept it, or is it up to the department head to okay it? Or both?
Good question. For, for right now, without having anything else?
Right now.
Standard for this motion, it's up to the recipient to receive it. And I think we fleshed that out a little bit more about process going forward.
Okay. So you will coordinate with the department head and recipient?
Yep.
And the treasurer's office, should the recipient choose to accept said donation?
Yeah. So going, I mean, just things to think about. We have all sorts of, you know, what does this do for triggering short-term disability, long-term disability, medical leaves? All of those things have to come into play. All of those parts of the policy have to be looked at with, how do these all play? So there's too much to figure out tonight, so keeping it very high level and approving it at a very simplistic form.
Right. But from a process notice today?
Yeah.
Okay.
And approach Brian if you wish to donate.
Yep.
And then you will discuss with the recipient. If they're in acceptance of, then coordinate with the department head, them, and the treasurer's office to execute.
Correct.
That's the process.
Not in the motion.
We have a minimum, we have a maximum, we have a date.
Yeah, effective 11/18/2024 through June 30/2025, or until such time, the personnel policy is revised.
Works with me.
Revised. Specific to this, though. And just revised to address.
Address.
To address sick leave.
Transfer.
Transfer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make a friendly request?
Yeah.
Please do. This was your first meeting, that we're able to bring this to you, but the need started earlier this month. Would it be possible for an effective date of November 1st? If you'd be so inclined, if you're okay with it?
The effective date of being able to transfer doesn't impact the effective date of being able to use, does it?
I don't know. It's unknown.
This is all in that, right? So, so, I mean, I don't want to overcomplicate it, so it's probably simpler to just backdate it than to try to explain that.
Yeah.
So I'm fine if you guys are.
Backdate it to November 1st, and you can work with the treasurer to find out the mechanisms for how that works retroactively.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay.
And...
There's a lot there.
There is.
So we're allowing use based on the effective date?
Yes.
Allowing the transfer and the use?
Yes.
We're not expiring the use at the end date.
You mean on...
We didn't define use, we just defined an effective date.
True.
So all I'm saying is that we're sitting here, you know, as a group agreeing that the effective date is in lieu also the date of use, you can start using it. But on the flip side, we're not saying that you can no longer use it on June 30, even if you have it, right?
Correct. We're leaving that open on the end, yeah.
Because it's not defined.
It's not defined, so we just...
We understand that that's the intent.
It's more of a timeframe for the three of us to work on a policy than it is for the stoppage of the use of that time.
Right, got it. Right. Okay, I think you want to give it a whirl.
If you are ready to entertain a motion, I am ready to try and read my chicken scratch. I would like to make a motion to allow the voluntary transfer of accrued sick benefit time from one employee to another employee, provided the donating employee's accrual of time does not fall below 80 hours, and provided the receiving employee's accrued sick time does not exceed 1,000 hours. This transfer of sick time is to be approved by the town administrator, with an effective date of November 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025, or until such time, the personnel policy is amended to address sick leave transfer.
Can I offer an amendment? If that's been captured? Just approval of...
Yeah, there you go.
Approval of, by the town administrator, is more approval of, or approval of follow the process defined, right? Because we didn't say Brian would approve it. We said it just happens if the recipient accepts it. So it's more that Brian's ensuring it follows that process, so friendly amendment to say... Trying to think how to say that.
Sorry, can you read the piece about approval one more time?
I wrote, "The transfer is to be approved by the town administrator," that is what I...
Okay.
Is to be, is...
Administered by?
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah.
That sounds better.
Yeah, okay.
Simpler and better, yes. Is to be administered by...
Taken out, approved, and put administered.
So would you like me to try and re-encapsulate, or does the, strike my original statement regarding approval by the town administrator to be replaced with, to be administrate, administered by the town administrator?
Okay.
Okay, I think that's good.
Thank goodness these are all recorded, she can just play it back and figure out what we said. Yes, yes.
Very.
Yes, it does.
I'll, I'll second that.
Yeah, thank you for reading that.
Yeah, and thank you for putting that together. I think it encapsulated what it needed to for tonight.
For tonight. Going to your con...
Lots of items for the parking lot.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Review of requests and potential approval of a support letter for the town of Northfield's home rule petition for the proposed emergency medical services property. Chief Focke is here as well, if we have questions for him. Him and I have been part of the EMS task force, or what exactly, regionalization task force, that has been looking at Northfield EMS's services and the multiple towns that they cover, and their expansion to maintain and that service level and keep the response times, you know, as low as possible, et cetera, so... Been a lot of work going on there, and a lot to come, and there'll be some stuff in the budget season coming related to these efforts, but the short version is, they've identified a property. They've gotten approval, as I understand it, from their voters in Northfield to purchase, to fund and purchase. The challenge is that, I guess in Massachusetts, by law, you can't, as a municipality, acquire property outside of your limits. And this is not in Northfield. So they are requesting legislation to allow an exception, because of the use and the need, the purpose. And they're looking for letters of support from participating towns, so... Did I miss anything, chief? If I did, come on up, please, and add, that was my short version.
No, I think, I think you hit everything right on the head. With that whole, that whole process. Other than, I think the voters, yeah, it was just last week, right? Last Wednesday? Last Wednesday, at their special time meeting, the voters approved the purchase of the building, which is just outside the town line.
We're trying to, you know, obviously, they're trying to get this in, session's ending soon, so trying to get it in ASAP. Believe the goal is to try to get, you know, requests out this week, or today, as much as possible, so I wanted to put it on. I know it was last minute when we added it to the agenda, or when I did, but just knowing timing and everything, I wanted to put it in front of all of you. Obviously, we don't have to submit a letter of support, but I wanted to give you all an opportunity to, if you wish to act quickly.
Go ahead, Jim.
I will say, I've been following this, and I will start by saying, I am in very strong support of this initiative, as well as requesting my fellow members of the board to support this as well. We rely heavily on this service, as do other towns. I understand it is a Northfield department, but it is a regional service with this expanded space that will provide them with suitable quarters to store their equipment and their assets. It, it benefits the greater community. There was one comment, somebody who had reservations about this, that it was printed as part of the article, that they were concerned this would be a clubhouse outside of town limits. I will just say, I take exception to that on behalf of these dedicated professionals that come out and work to provide us with life-saving measures. I had to get that off my chest, thank you for listening.
Mine's very brief. I'm in favor of signing the letter and sending it off to the representatives.
My, I am, obviously, putting it on the agenda, and, maybe not obviously. I put it on the agenda so that we all had the opportunity to review, but I am in support, and, you know, with chief, we've spent, he's spent way more time than I have, but, and he's actually, I think, you toured the facility and things ahead of time, right? So very involved, and think it is a very much needed and in the right direction of what, what, you know, we need and what our fellow towns need to continue to support the service, so... My only comment was, should we modify that CC to fire chief or EMS director or both? Given this is EMS, I mean, yes, it's fire, but it's EMS for chief's title in the, in the letter. And I don't know, it's semantics, but at the same time, would it be better to note that you are also the EMS director on that? You're on the CC line at the bottom, it's not, not a signature line, but... Although, I'm saying that, and I actually...
I think the official committee is EM, it's, is it ambulance, ambulance service coordinator or something?
Yours?
Yeah, I think so.
Really?
I know it's a position you guys created, because we deal with the ambulances. We do the service contract with the ambulances, but I think if you just CC it to the fire chief.
Chief services your representative to both Northfield EMS and OMS. Okay, but other than EMD and fire chief, we don't have a separate, just specific to that? Okay, we just carry it under the fire, okay. All right, I was thinking we had one, but maybe I was mixing it up.
We do embed it in the fire department that handles our EMS training, but...
Okay, all right, all good then. I'll make a motion that we send the letter of support to Senator Comfort and Representative Wipps for the home rule petition submitted by the town of Northfield to authorize a purchase of property in the town of Burnerston.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
On that same topic, there's been a lot of work and with the group and such towards, you know, what is this going to be, fleshing it out, you know, making it more viable. We really haven't brought anything back to the board, in terms of kind of updates, I don't believe. I mean, there was an original document back when we discussed who would, you know, join chief in, in going to the regular task force meetings and such. What would the board like to see, in terms of that feedback? Or are you good receiving that when we do a budget? You know, when we see the budget for fire, because obviously, there's going to be some adjustments in there related to this? Or would you like a little more in-depth review or discussion ahead of time? And if you want to think about that and let us know, that's fine. And if you want to think about that and let us know, that's fine. And there's a lot there and I don't really know what.
It hinges on how in-depth of a memo you plan on putting out. If there's a lot of minutia inside of that and you want, there's a lot to review, then I would say have it as a standalone memo that could come anytime that you're ready to submit it. If it's a very succinct part of the budget, here's a small paragraph or two about, you know, the synopsis of what we've done and how we got here and here, here's the budget associated with it, then just do it during budget.
Okay. Well, we have, we don't have the next meeting day. It just got postponed. We were supposed to meet like a week or so ago. You haven't seen a new date yet.
I think it's tomorrow. I thought it was tomorrow.
Surprise. Yeah. Well, I have a capital planning committee meeting tomorrow night too.
Yeah.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry. So.
We can divide and conquer. As usual. Anyhow, I guess the, the numbers, you know, we don't have the final one. So we don't have a kind of maybe a direct idea of what that percent increase is going to be or how significant year over year. It's going to be significant.
Yeah.
Year over year, because we didn't have a large assessment. But I guess we'll, we'll kind of hinge on that and what we can do is maybe give, chief, when we figure that out roughly, maybe we should have a note over to the board and maybe give us an indication on whether you'd like a.
A more in-depth discussion of where that number's going and where it came from?
Sure.
I think I could put the general, I mean generalize it enough in a, you know, in a one-page memo.
Sure.
And then if there's more questions when we see it, when we see the budget. I feel like it's going to be pretty self-explanatory in a, in a, you know, what, what the increase is for and how we got there. But yes, the meeting is tomorrow at four.
Okay. Okay.
If you can't make it, that's fine.
Missed that email. I know you will represent just fine without me. I don't know. I'll make it. So I'll let you know tomorrow. The, yeah, if you want to put together one page and just kind of think that'd be a good idea, what the five-year plan, what the goals are, what the, you know, overall. With, and then we'll probably have a number pretty soon, if not tomorrow night. And then we can go from there.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you, chief.
We don't want you guys to be seeing, I was just thinking about like you seeing all these different things happening in different towns or different outreach and communication and feeling like we're not keeping up to date. So.
I appreciate that.
Yep. We're sitting in it so often that now it's becoming like just normal.
It's like, pretty used to it.
It feels, right. Exactly. Okay. Enough on that. Anything else, chief? On that for you? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Chief, before you go, speaking of updates, thank you for the continued updates on the drought situation and fires.
Hopefully we're going to see some rain later this week. I don't have a huge amount of faith that it's gonna.
Amount to anything?
It's gonna amount to too, too much, but I know they have a big fire going on right now in Otter River. I think it's up to fifth or sixth line brush fire that they got task force moving in tomorrow. So. Every time I think we got it, like another big one pops up someplace.
Thank you for the continuous updates.
Yep. Yes, thank you. We appreciate them and delete them.
On that note, as you're all aware, chief has instituted a temporary ban for outdoor burning. Has not been rescinded to date. So it will be rescinded once the drought levels reduce. So.
Every time I get a, get a sniff of fire and I'm like, somebody's wood stove, cause it's cold. Okay. Cause I have that same pause now, especially right now. Yikes. So yeah, cross our fingers it's a good rain, but you know, it's going to take a bit to get anything wet and soak through.
Yeah.
All right. I think that's, that's it. Obviously before the meeting, those that didn't know, heard about the water work being done on Lilian's Way and there may be some power interruptions. Hopefully they will be able to get that wrapped up this evening and.
The repair is anticipated to be finished tonight. I've been getting messages over here. And for anybody listening, school is anticipated to open tomorrow as regularly scheduled. So we're getting that notice out to school officials and to the town.
That, so they're sending out a notice that they planned to?
School administration is sending that out.
Just to avoid any, okay.
Yeah, we're updating town website. So notices going out, school as planned tomorrow. Excellent.
Excellent. Any other regular business? I think I covered it all.
I think you did.
With that, I'll move, we go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one. Contract negotiations with non-union personnel regarding the highway superintendent and the town administrator.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Roll call vote. Brian, call the roll.
Selectman Moyn.
Aye.
Chairman Smith.
Aye.
Selectman Bestwush.
Aye.
We will not return to regular session. Thank you.